Good evening, everybody. We have Gwen Pugh from Grand Avenue United Methodist Church. Did I get that correct?
Yes.
And she's here to offer an invocation on our part, on our behalf, and I've asked her to take into consideration Kathy Rhodes' recent loss of their loved one.
Let's pray. Well, Lord, we come to you this evening, and we do praise you. You are a mighty God. And, Lord, we especially lift up to you this evening Kathy Rhodes and her family with the loss of her husband. Lord, we just pray for comfort and peace for them and strength in the days to come, Lord God, and just surround them with people who can share your love with them. We pray for this meeting. We pray for wisdom. We pray for your peace and your guidance, Lord, in all the decisions. And I lift up every person here, Lord, and ask a special blessing upon them as they seek to do the work for the city here in Connersville. And we just give you all the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you that know Kathy and whatever sweet individual she is, actually, we used to have to be apologized for not being here. And I don't think she owes us an apology. You know, she's gone through a rough time with him and our thoughts and our prayers with Kathy and her family and the loved ones, and we wish them all the best. And we wish her consolation in the loss of her husband. So, thank you for your wonderful prayer. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes from our January 2nd County Council meeting? And if so, are there any additions or corrections? entertain a motion for acceptance?
I'll make a motion that we put some notes in.
You have a motion to approve? There's a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Posen, aye. Isaiah, motion carries. Five, no. I'll send it down for your signatures. Mark Plum, if you're watching, we're still carrying on your condition. You started. Is there any mail that the county has received that they'd like to bring for the body of the council to share with the rest? County attorney?
No.
And where are we at in our Meridian stuff?
As far as Meridian being able to be... Where we are is there is a statute that allows us to pursue having two different providers and pay account. What we're faced with is, in the statutes, unclear. The statute doesn't indicate that at some point prior to me, and, you know, I don't know when this happened, you know, one provider has made the county provider, and then we have Meridian come in. We can go through the process of having Meridian become also a county provider. We have to. My understanding, from talking to my contact at the Department of Health, it is a process, you know, but I think it depends on how many people Meridian is serving. My understanding is they're coming in and probably serving a good portion of the county, or that's their plan. So that's where we have to decide if it's worth the amount of money that the county can allocate to one service provider versus two, and if it's worth it to go through that process to have Meridian designated as, under the state's guideline, as a county provider, which can be done.
So what do we have to do to reach that point?
We, basically, I think the initial process is we're going to have to figure out how many people they're serving, Meridian is serving. And then, obviously, the needs of the county as far as population goes, fill out the paperwork and try to have them approved as a county provider.
So who does?
They are a county provider. I mean, I think I can do the paperwork with getting that kind of information. Obviously, we're not asking for names, so I don't think there will be a HIPAA issue. It should just be numbers. But honestly, what we have to look at is once, I think, once we collect those numbers from Meridian, then we'll have to decide whether it's worth it to pursue. Because my understanding is the county's total amount they can allocate to either provider or, you know, to one provider versus another or to split it is not that much. And the initial paperwork is submitting, and then, you know, the state will look at it and see. My understanding is Meridian has been approved to be a county provider for other counties. We're in the unique situation where Connersville is the main city in the county. So in other counties where they have similar-sized towns, they might allocate so much for this provider in this town and so much for this provider in another town. So we're in a unique position where it's harder for us to show... It's almost like my understanding, and I think it comes down to our demographics, is... I mean, we're not talking about, we're not a big enough city that's showing, oh, this side of town is serviced by Meridian and this side of town is serviced by Centerstone. That's not really the issue. And that's usually what the state is dealing with when designating... When designating, both of them meet the requirements to be designated as a county provider. That's not the issue. They both meet those requirements. It's just the state has to approve that, you know, the county wants to split the funds between two, that two are serving kind of equally, the county.
So again, my question is, what's the next step?
The next step is if the county wants to pursue, making, to see if we can make both and what that will entail, then I will contact my contact person and start that procedure and see if we can get the numbers. Because I think if they come out similar, which I'm guessing, I'm guessing what happened is Centerstone's overwhelmed and obviously we need Meridian too, getting those numbers together to make sure that... I mean, it can't happen. My understanding from my contact is it could take, you know, six months to get through that process. But both providers have already been approved. I mean, they're certified by the state to be either, since we already have one and we're kind of a small county, but we're in a great need. It's kind of a unique situation.
So I thought the consensus was in the county, but that's what we wanted to do.
Is do the two?
Is that correct, Jane?
We already done that part.
Yeah.
So...
I think my opinion of, as a state's first... I understood the state statutes say anyone certified mental health provider.
That's what the statute says.
And it's, my understanding, we could possibly have three companies or businesses in this county that are certified mental health providers, including Fayette Region. And I guess my concern was that I wanted anyone, any company that was involved in mental health services to this community and certified to receive those funds. If the state was going to mandate how much we had to pay, then I wanted all businesses that were participating in that to receive those funds. But Cornerstone or Centerstone, they call it a designated state provider.
Yes. So the statute does not...
I don't understand the difference between the code and...
The code does not mention anything about being a designated state provider. But the problem is that the code does not designate that, but the state does even though it's not in the code. So if we want to designate more than one provider, we can do that, and we have to apply for that. Now, my understanding is as of December of 2018, it was only Centerstone and Meridian that were approved by the state to be mental, basically a dual diagnosis certified. As of December 2018, the hospital was not. My understanding is that's likely to change, probably this year. So we can go through the process twice of having, trying to have Meridian designated as, I guess, becoming a designated provider. And then...
Do it again.
Do it again, basically. And I understand the county's position is they don't want to show favor to, you know, both of these places meet the requirements by the state. Now there's a designation requirement, which isn't in the statute, but we can have, we can go through the process of having Midtown designated. I would guess, they're already certified, but they're not designated by the state, which I think we're at the point in our county, even though it's small, that there's a need probably to have more than one provider designated.
So you need to file the paperwork?
I can follow up and file the paperwork.
So that this thing doesn't keep dragging on because we meet once a month?
Okay.
I would propose that we meet again as a council on the 19th to address this issue.
February 19th?
February 19th.
And I have my contact person, so I can tell her that we want to start the, we think there's a need that we need to have two designated, and like I said, down the line.
Do a joint?
We could do a joint. We could do a joint, that's fine. Would you mind?
And then, where we can all have a...
Yeah, 6 o'clock?
Decision, yeah? I mean, at the same time?
That's fine. Was there a motion on the floor to? Will Mark be back by then?
Mark's probably going to be back till the 21st if I remember right. I mean, how many of us are going to be?
We just need a majority.
Would the council like me to go ahead and submit the paperwork, or I will just check to see? I mean, I can give you...
I guess I was going to understand that's what was being done.
But I was going to say, I have a November 21st email where I said, "Council and commissioners do not want to give Centerstone the full amount. They want to divide it."
Correct. And that's what we...
We thought it was already in motion since November.
And it was in motion. I was contacted by the state to say, oh, there's a little thing is, Meridian is certified, but not designated. But we can have them designated.
Absolutely, it's for 21st. Dan, if they admit that the IC code is anyone certified, do they have a leg to stand on to force us to not do with that money what we see fit to do with?
No. Okay. Maybe not, but my understanding is it would just be better to go through the process of having them designated because we need that anyway. I mean, you know, we need in the county to have two designated, and that's their requirement. We could certainly fight that because it's not listed in the code. All it says in the code is if you're certified, and both are certified.
Is the dedicated listed in the administrative code?
No. No, they're not.
I can't on the 12th to 14th.
I think we should tell the state, the Health Department, and everyone. Well, either. I mean, it really concerned me when somebody's given me, involves trying to tell me...
That's basically what has happened, is the code says, and then there's an addition administratively that is not, but it's not listed. It's just what the state wants to have.
Yeah.
But like I said, we can go through the process and have them designated.
But that takes... At their pace?
Possibly. With them already being certified, I'm hoping the pace is a little bit faster because they have been certified.
I mean, maybe we should send them a letter and tell them our intent and that they need to do their thing that needs to be done on their end. But our intent is to compensate these services that provide those services for our community equally. And I don't know.
Can the 18th? Does that work for the council? Does that work for you? It's a Monday.
In the evening?
Yeah.
Oh, well, it's a county holiday, and it's President's Day.
Oh.
Oh, it's a holiday.
It's not for me.
The courthouse is closed, isn't it? Isn't it open?
It's not a holiday. No.
It's an observed holiday.
Yeah, it's not a county holiday.
You leave the 18th? That works for you? Carrie?
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Okay. And then if you could follow up with me in a week? Anne? She can email me where you're at so we can stand top of this because we can't keep letting this drag out for months. We need to get this done. So someone make a motion for us?
I'll make a motion that we re-continue this till the 18th of February to discuss the...
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor to continue this discussion on Meridian and Centerstone on February 18th at 6:00 p.m. here at the courthouse. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posen, aye. Isaiah, motion carries. Okay. I'm sure that there are no committee reports yet. I do, we have a small report. I'm going to try to put together some training for us prior to the budget as to what the different funds are, how they can be accessed, and what can be accessed for... I don't know how successful I'll be getting other information, but as I gather, we'll try to have some little classes on what these funds are, what we can do with them and what we can't do with them. Because there's a lot of different uses for that. Something I have to say. Mr. Naylor, your commissioner's representative, do you have anything for us?
Well...
You had a short meeting this afternoon.
Yeah. Some of the outcome of our short meeting this afternoon. Mike and I was talking. The bulk of patron concerns had to do with the process of appointment, board appointments, and so on. And I think we realized that in the past, we've had, we were lucky to get one person to apply for a board appointment or be able to take a board appointment. And we got a few people that was interested in a few of our boards. So we realized that maybe we need to create some type of a procedure for venting those people.
Vetting?
Vetting, yeah.
There may be vetting too.
And Mike and I wondered about the idea of creating a separate committee that could sit down and go through these applicants or names, possibly interviews, whether that be phone conversations or whatever. I had the idea of maybe it would create, we'd have to be a little bit careful because it would create a little shift of power to the council more so than the commissioners, but legally, it would allow us to sit down and meet in private with these people. But if we created a subcommittee of maybe three, two to three council members and a commissioner to sit down and go through board appointment, applicant, appletes for both the council and the commissioners, and kind of screen them people and give recommendations to the commissioners or give recommendations to the council. With the commissioners and the council for that matter, it makes it so difficult to do things legally and because of the open door policies and whatnot, to do interviews and this and that. And I'm not sure that the law allows us to have an executive session for interviewing board appointments, to be quite honest with you. I know it does, it allows us to meet in executive session to interview employees, potential employees, but I'm not sure about board appointments, appointed positions. So that's where I come up with the idea, well, if we could create some type of a joint committee that would kind of screen these applicants and go through them and maybe make some recommendations to the appropriate board. I don't know. It's something to think about. I mean, my goal, when I asked for public involvement, was to get more people involved in county government and city government. And if we don't have some way to screen these people and go through it and make decisions, then what good is it to ask for those applicants to come in? And so I think it's opened my eyes. You know, most of those people for those board appointments, I knew them personally or knew of them, and I could, you know, in my mind, I could go through them and say, well, this one's probably the best qualified or this one's not. But sometimes we don't always know those candidates personally. And so, yeah, maybe we do need a different procedure, both council and commissioners.
Or even an application process.
So when I talk to Gary about this, I've had a lot of people approach me about this. As a taxpayer myself, it kind of concerns me about the process that we just went through. Not we as a council, because we've not really had to deal with that where we've had multiple people, like Gary said. We're lucky to get one person to fill out a position, you know, even to say I have two or three people apply for it. But it opened my eyes that there is no process that we have in place. Now, if we have to do it as ordinance or whatever, a motion to simply, will satisfy that? Anne, I don't know. Or a resolution?
For recommendation.
Well, I wouldn't say recommendation. Same.
To change, I mean...
To have a policy put in place that, that when... So here's kind of what I'm thinking, I'm just spitballing out loud here. We know a position is going to become available in a month. We advertise for it. Anybody that wants to apply for it would probably just turn them into change. They would be kind of the central hub for that. And once we get them and the deadline got it off a week beforehand, we meet as a committee, discuss the applicants. Because I think we do ourselves a disservice sometimes if we select somebody that is pro-this or anti-that and, you know, very vocal about it, that, you know, are we opening ourselves up for a litigious situation here? I don't want to get into that, and I don't want to look like we're playing favorites. And I want it to be open and above board. And those people that make the effort to come in, it kind of is a discouraging process for them because they think, well, I went through the process, I applied for it, but nobody even looked at my, you know, this person has what qualifications, and I have these qualifications. And I think we need to look at all that. So I talked to Gary, I said, I think we as a council will try to fix it for ourselves tonight going forward. And Gary suggested, hey, let's, what about the commissioners joining? I think that's a great idea. It really makes a lot of sense.
I agree too.
And this is strictly my idea. I haven't talked to the other two commissioners, but I just, that's my personal thoughts on it. I just think we need to create some type of a policy, whether, like Mike said, whether it's through a resolution.
I would suggest a resolution.
So you have to draft it up, right?
That's fine. Just so everybody, with a standard resume or, you know, request a resume or a standard application.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think that would be the best thing. Instead of just sending in your name, there had...
Yeah. Something to look at.
Yes. But I think that would fall under a new resolution.
Would this back us into a corner of having to put documented job descriptions for the boards of what they're applying for?
I don't think so because as it's written right now, the resolution is just... I mean, the commissioners still have the final say.
Or the council.
Or the council, but ultimately...
It depends what it's for.
Yeah.
But I would think we'd have to create some type of a resolution creating that committee and everything.
And then the binding.
That would be binding for the next council and the next commissioners and to utilize that practice.
I would love to just say that, like, two years ago, when I first came on council, this was something I questioned. I don't know if you remember the conversation? Just because I wanted to know due process, and I wanted to avoid the appearance of the good old boy system. And so I feel like this is just an opportunity to set a standard and to also let the community know that people just aren't put into these positions because of their stature or who they are. It's because they put forth some effort to apply.
There is, there is no, at this point, there is nothing.
And it just protects even our image or what we stand for.
I mean, I think in defense of all of you and myself and the other two commissioners, I think we do try to go through those names and really think on a personal basis, who is the best one for that job? I mean, in our defense, I think we try to...
And I understand that now, as a new person just coming in.
But it looks like...
And as a community person, I did not, because you don't see that.
From the outside, it looks like, well, it's the same circle. Well, and Joe Schultz mentioned it today in the commissioners' meeting. For the most part, the reason it's the same circle is because that's the only people that'll help, that'll come forward.
But a lot of people, only reason the same people come forward because we have incidents like this, and in no fault of them, I don't think there was any malice or ill intent intended here, you know, and it's just the way it worked out. But it opened our eyes, a little opened my eyes to say, hey, we really don't have a process here by which, because we've always had just one person apply or...
If one.
Or make it a last-minute phone call, hey, would you fill this position?
Yeah. So...
Well, I don't think, I, I sometimes really don't think we put enough emphasis or importance in our board appointments. I don't think we spend enough time on. I mean, we come up in December, and they expire at the end of December. And the first meeting in January, we do all of our board appointments, and we think, oh, well, that's just what we do. Well, I'm not even so sure that we shouldn't change some of them expiration dates.
I agree because as we, you know, talked in the hallway today, especially for the council, those appointments end December 31st. And 30th, is it?
It's the last day, nearly.
Okay. The last day of December, because I don't make calendar problems. You know, they expire then, but we don't even have a president or vice president appointing. And so we're just kind of scrambling to make those appointments. So why not change the date to be the last day of January? And that gives us some time to work together and for those applications to come in.
Yeah. I mean, it's just like the APC, for instance, and the PZA. They need those appointments for their first meeting in January. Well, it's hard for us to delay that and do any process and still have time to get that done so that they can have their meeting, first meeting in January. Well, if we could create those expiration dates maybe being different, maybe being the end of January, that gives us the whole month of January as a new board, as a new council, as a new board of commissioners to go through that process, maybe. I don't know. But we, I do feel, as a commissioner, I feel... But we, I do feel, as a commissioner, I feel rushed to try to get those board appointments completed.
Right.
And so, you stick in whatever names come to mind, you know, and so, maybe we do need to even address the expiration dates.
Well, people then, too, they don't necessarily know when these openings are coming up, because we're taking care of it the first day, or the first time we meet.
Yeah.
And these, I mean, who stays on top of who's on the alcohol, you know, board, when's that open up, and nobody necessarily knows that, but if we can advertise in the paper or something and say, you know, these opportunities are available for you to serve, if you're so interested, then fill out an application or submit a resume to, you know, the county auditor's office for your, you know, consideration, something along the line. But then, like you said, I think we need to extend those dates that we have currently till the end, end of last day of December, that they end the last day of January. And that gives us time to look at them and not feel so rushed, do that.
I mean, we're going to have to check some state codes and whatnot on some of those boards to make sure that we have that leeway, but, but yeah, either that or the old boards need to make the appointment the year before.
So that's another to-do item for you, Ann.
Got it.
To make sure that we can change those dates.
So, that was one discussion today. Do you mind if I steal some thunder?
No, no, go for it.
Another announcement that was made public today, David Baker's leaving 911 to seek out a state job, right, state employment job, changing, kind of changing directions. And today, the commissioners, with his recommendation, we hired Kelly Van Meter as our interim 911 director. She'll be taking over for him on Friday. David has graciously said that he would be more than happy to be a phone call away, and I greatly appreciate that, because he has done great things for us in his tenure as 911 director. When we, and I spoke of this during the commissioners meeting, when he, when I took over as commissioner, complaints on radio communications was a daily thing, and to the 911 center and to myself practically as a commissioner. And so, I set out to make that our number one priority when we hired David, and he has, he took that on with both hands, and we, I'm happy to say, we have corrected most all of our radio problems, to the point where I haven't had a complaint in months about communication problems with our emergency services. And I applaud him for that. It took changing vendors to get that accomplished. In the first place, the threat of changing vendors, and I might also say that the vendor that was under contract, they saw it our way, and all of those repairs were made under our contractual arrangement at no charge to the county. So, I applaud David for that and Kelly also. She has been a great asset to us getting things turned around. We had a lot of, several personnel issues that were addressed and have been fixed, and through some help from the state with state funding the training, we have increased our knowledgeable dispatchers and continue to work, be working on that certifications, and David will dwell on that later with the annual report. But I just, I applaud David for everything that he's done for the county, and I thank him very much, and he's going to be a great loss, but Kelly's going to, she's going to step up to it.
She's going to fill the shoes.
She's going to fill the shoes.
Can I ask a question to the vendor? What vendor was it, they came back and corrected the antennas?
ERS came back and corrected.
Not to rip a band-aid off a wound, you know where I'm going with this.
Okay.
Speaking as a line officer, a safety officer for the Arizona Fire Department, we have radio issues still there, and we know, we believe it to be a repeater issue, and ERS installed the antenna on the tank, the water tower tank. We had somebody come in and have it do a study, and they said the antenna was placed in the wrong place, the wrong side of the tank. When it's filled with water, it blocks reception. As a safety officer, somebody is going to get killed.
Yes, sir.
Because the antenna should have been placed on top of the tower, which would have put it the same height as the hill.
Yeah.
Is this something we can address with them? Because this guy says, you know, we can get all the radios we want, it's not going to fix our problem. Because of the topography that we have in that part of the county, you know, Bentonville doesn't face it, and Glenwood doesn't face it to the degree that we do, Bentonville doesn't really face it at all. We've tried new radios, we've tried different things. Is this something we can get them to look at, to address? Because otherwise, we're looking at $5,000.
I can say this, the gentleman, his name escapes me, but there is a service manager at their Indianapolis office, ERS, his name escapes me, but I have it, and he has military background, he was stellar in his service to us, but, and so, he helped me get everything fixed well, properly. They admitted the fault, they admitted some shoddy things and shoddy workmanship in the past, and they were great. But, you know, sometimes after stuff like that, it just feels better to move on, and since there was a very reputable mobile com, I voted for the dealer in Cincinnati Mobile Com, I decided to go with them. But I can address, I can approach them tomorrow and ask them.
I appreciate it, because otherwise, as a volunteer fire department, we got to come up with $5,000 to move this antenna, put a new one up.
Yeah.
And we were told that that would, 75% chance would fix it according to their software, because they can't, nobody can give you 100%.
One thing to look at is that they did have some people that were working as independent and independent contractors on the side, and so, look very closely at what documentation you have to see if it was an ERS employee working as an independent contractor under a different name. That was something they did, and I have something in my mind that says that may have been the case on that antenna install, so we can check on that. I'm happy to help you do that.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Band-aid back on.
Okay. But anyway, I just want to take this opportunity to thank David and for all of his service and all of the time that he's put into it. I was hoping for a longer relationship, but I understand. Personal and family has to be taken into consideration first, and that's what he did, and I appreciate it.
And I do appreciate the opportunity, I really do, make good friends.
Yeah, miss you.
Thank you.
We'll wait on all these.
Oh, let's go and do that way up there.
So do we need to go back and make a motion to extend the dates of appointments?
Checking on that legality of that one. So I did want to say that in our meeting for the 18th, that we revisit that as well, too. If you have to advocate, that would be part of the discussion, the perfect time as well as the commissioners are going to be here.
And it would be a perfect time to build us the committee and.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Creating a committee.
Yeah.
Can I also add that I think some of the committees need to hear from, we're not hearing from the committees sometimes throughout the year.
What committees are we not hearing from?
Did we hear from the alcohol board last year?
Well, they don't necessarily come report to us.
The who?
You got a representative serving on the board.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
She's talking about like the alcohol board.
Oh, no.
I mean, do all those report out and give a report?
Not all of them, and most of them, I mean, like, if the commissioner or the council sits on it, representative sits on it, that's your responsibility to come back to the board if there's anything to report.
Some of those committees don't meet.
But like the alcohol board, it's public record, I mean, they're a different entity of their own, I mean.
I was just thinking, we didn't get very many reports from committees in general.
She just wondered why her illegal distillery hasn't been approved yet.
Is that what it is? Okay.
Says the drug prevention.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Yeah, you wanted to go through this here.
Do you want to do the?
Yeah, go ahead while you're up there.
Budget reductions and additions.
What's this one? County General Fund, Commissioners, Community Enrichment, $40,000.
All that I have before you tonight represents some of our budget negotiations last year, and what it was, was, these were changes that we had talked about and decided to make the budgets work, but we couldn't do them until February because they were beyond the advertised budget proposals. And I think it'd be easier if I start with the budget, maybe the budget reductions, Mike, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Well, just for clarity, I wanted to explain, just so that our new council members know that we kind of agreed to this.
Right, I mean, this is what made the budget fly.
Right, I didn't want them to think it was something new.
But I also want to clarify that you are not bound by any prior decisions made by the prior council that you are not a part of. So you're not obligated in any way, shape, or form, there was just kind of a gentleman's agreement that we, they kind of helped us, so we would help them. But again, you are not obligated in any way, shape, or form.
On the budget reductions, with, from the state 911 fund, there was $67,625 that we would like to reduce the statewide fund, 911 fund by, and that would be the health insurance line item and the IDAX contract and the GIS mapping contract. And the health insurance line item, we would like to shift it over to the city share 911 fund and pay for that out of that fund, which was $60,000. And then, then the six, or the $7,625, the commissioners agreed to put that over into courthouse operating so that the budget, the 911 budget would allow for raises, for our much-needed raises for employees over there. So that would help cover the raises that the council give to the 911 personnel. And then, we also, the commissioners also agreed to reduce the county general, the courthouse budget by $51,366, which would move two custodial salaries from the courthouse budget over to the courthouse operating budget, which the courthouse operating budget is our edict money, that, our special edict money that funds the courthouse, the operation and the payment, the bond payment of the courthouse. And in return, we asked for $40,000 additional appropriation in the commissioners' budget, $20,000 to be used for 4H enrichment or encouragement programs, and $20,000 for our bicentennial celebration. We would like to give that to our tourism board to fund, or help fund our bicentennial celebration. The original thought on the 4H was that we wanted to invest in our youth, number one, our future youth, or our future adults, number one. Number two, by investing into the 4H, that in turn invests in our fair, our county fair, which is the largest community draw of the year, every year, and I don't think you'll find anybody that will discredit that. So, we wanted, we thought that what better way to encourage a bigger fair, encourage more participation in 4H, and make better adults, help make better adults for future leaders of our community. So, that in a nutshell kind of sums that up. There is also an additional appropriation for $2,000. For some reason, when David presented his budgets, these IDAX coordinator and trainer per diem's got eliminated off the budget, and we need those put back in, so there's also an additional appropriation for $2,000 there. I don't feel that I explained it well enough, but is there any questions?
I actually do have a question, because Corinne Westerfield had called regarding that $20,000 for the bicentennial. I don't want to say the wrong one.
Bicentennial.
This is the bicentennial.
The bicentennial, and was questioning whether some of those funds could be distributed between another committee, and I don't know if she, because she was supposed to get on the agenda, did she have a chance?
No.
She asked me about it.
And I talked, I talked to some people about the idea of, well, could some of those funds be used for the parade, to help with the parade? And my thoughts are, I think we could ask the tourism board to take that into consideration, because all applicants for that, for their monies, they have to file an application and it has to be.
So those $20,000 are funneled through the tourism board?
Yes, yes.
I understand, I see clearly now.
We wanted to, by giving it directly to the tourism board rather than the bicentennial committee or whatever, then that was another checks and balance to make sure that it got funneled in the proper directions. And it may, that may relieve some funds for tourism board, I mean, if they've got that extra $20,000 to work with, that may relieve some of their own budget to award to the parade, maybe, I don't, I don't know. I think that's worth some encouragement to the tourism board to try to, hey, let's try to help out for the parade as well, because they're doing it in conjunction with the bicentennial celebration. What I've been, I'm made to understand that they're working, they're running side by side but not together, so to speak.
So here's the problem, and I brought this up when we first talked about this during budget hearings, of Corinne calling, nailed it. What youth groups do you say no to? You know, we're picking and choosing here, we're picking and choosing how 4H, and I'm not saying 4H isn't worthy of it, but what about FFA, what about Babe Ruth, what about basketball, what about soccer, what about fishing club, or, you know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, where, how do you?
The extension in the 4H is within the county realm.
But we're picking and choosing.
They're in our realm.
And I, and I, Mike, I understand where you're coming from, but 4H just wasn't, it wasn't just because of 4H, it was. it wasn't just because of 4H. It was, it was gonna, the more, the bigger the 4H program is, the bigger it makes our fair. So I guess
I understand.
We were, we were looking at, we were looking at trying to, so to speak, kill two birds with one stone.
As soon as we offered that, the question was asked to me.
And.
Why are we, why are we choosing 4H?
Yeah.
And I said, that wasn't my decision.
And I agree with Kay. 4H and extension is part of the county government. It is a county program. It's not, it's not a private program, so to speak.
We have three councils committees on the 4H also, so it's part of the county.
So I, I don't know. I guess I, if, if the Rocket Club wanted support and they become part of the fair, I'd be all in favor of it. If it was going to help build the fair as well, I guess I'd be all in favor of looking at it. I don't know. But that, that's what I was looking at, was trying to benefit a economic growth in the community as well as invest in our kids. And I could do both with one expenditure.
And they're part of, they're already under our umbrella anyway.
But I don't think anybody can deny the fact that the fair is a great economic boost to our community as well as it's one of the few things that brings probably seventy-five to eighty-five percent of our community together once a year.
Couldn't you make it a youth fund?
I'm sorry?
A youth fund and then make the majority of your twenty thousand, if you want to project it to the fair, and then put a cap on some other little places where if a youth, if a youth group came forward and said, we have two hundred dollars to help our team, you put a cap on that and part of the money, but use the majority of it for the fair, and you can still support other places.
Well, I.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah.
See, the 4H falls under the county government and the extension office, and that's why I believe Gary chose that.
That's true.
But I, but I know what this is going to turn into.
But that's what I'm saying.
You can already see the writing on the wall.
Well, the thing of it is, who, if we didn't, if we hadn't have made a point in it and the extension office come to the council and said, we need an increase in our budget because our pre, the cost of 4H enrollment is astronomical and we've lost forty percent of our enrollment because of the enrollment cost, and we're going to increase, we need an increase in our budget to cover that enrollment fund, nothing never would have been said.
Right.
It would have been part of the extension budget and we'd went on. But where I have come out and said, I want to invest in our future, and here's where I want to start, and I'm not saying that's the end. Lord, if we could spend two hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money a year on our youth, I'm all for it.
If we had it, we could.
And I don't know anybody that would refuse it. Because our youth is our future. Our fixing our opiate problem, drug abuse problem, is fixing our kids. And if we don't fix them, we're not going to fix our drug problems in this community. We're not going to fix any of our problems in this community if we don't fix our kids. I mean, and we've got to start someplace. And is it the end? I hope not. I hope it's not the end of where we go. Because I hope we, I hope we see this as such a benefit that we come back next year and say, you know what? We're going, we're going to sit down, we're going to budget sixty thousand dollars for kids programs throughout the community. You know? But we've got to start someplace. And but we can't continue to do the same thing year after year and expect different results.
And I would jump in and say that during our financial hearing time, we discussed this at length. And we talked about it quite a bit and in our, as you had mentioned, my good old boy, like not, I like that, but in our gentleman's code, from a bunch of ladies and a few gentlemen, that we agreed to it already. So I think that this is the year to try and see if it works and come back and reassess it.
All I'm saying is that it's been raised. Exactly what I said would happen has happened, and it will continue to happen. So just be prepared for it. That's all.
Yeah.
I'm just saying be prepared to deal with it, so.
Well, I'd say on it too, though, and the only problem I have, I mean, there's plenty of organizations needing money and say, here's twenty thousand dollars to help you out. If it was something more specific, Gary, about the 4H needs this money to do this portion of a project.
What we are, what we have intentions on is, is the extension office will file a claim as the commissioners for the enrollment fees. And then we'll honor that claim and pay those enrollment fees. And there has been talk that there's, there's a problem with a lot of kids cannot afford the project kits.
Right.
So they drop out when the parents find out, oh, it's going to cost them twenty-five bucks more for the project kit. For those kids that can't afford those project kits, we'd like to help with that as well. So it's not, this money's going to the commissioners' budget, and they'll have to file a claim against it.
Okay, well, see, that's why I wanted to hear because you're going to be able to measure the success of this twenty thousand.
Right, yeah, yeah. You know, and I want to see, I want to see, okay, did it, does it increase our enrollment? Ten percent, twenty percent? Did it increase at fifty percent? By offering free enrollment fees? I think the county last year charged, Jane, you can help me on this because you're a leader, 4H leader, twenty-five dollars?
It's going to be twenty-five dollars this year.
Was going, yeah.
Per kid.
Yeah, twenty-five dollars per kid enrollment, just enrollment. And you take a family of two or three and then four or five projects on top of that with fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, forty-five, fifty-five dollar project kits costs, it becomes unaffordable for a lot of parents to keep their kids in 4H. Like everything else. I mean, it's, and I just thought, well, you know, we spend, we spend taxpayer dollars on a lot less important things.
Well, we've discussed this, I think sufficiently, but so let's take care of this in one fell swoop then.
Let's get one more item to talk about, right?
I do? Did I forget one?
No, the six hundred dollars is, it's a different one.
I just thought it was the same group.
I was going to say, I think I covered everything on these four sheets, but I'm.
Let's deal with the reductions first. There's two.
So you've got one general.
There's two, no, just handle the reductions first.
Okay. It's a reduction and additional on the same paper?
Here?
Yes.
Okay. Let's handle this separately.
I mean, yeah, both reductions are, I'm sorry.
Reduction and additional.
Yeah, so like you could deal with that one and then the other one.
Right. So we've got two reductions with an additional. The one for sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, the other one for fifty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd move.
Second? Motion approved. This one's seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the reduction and additional for the amount of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and the one for fifty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it. Motion carries. And then we have the three. Just two. So the City Share 911 for two thousand dollars and the commissioners for forty thousand dollars. So additional appropriations, one for the amount of forty thousand dollars, as Mr. Naylor's just described, and the second for the City Share 911, the amount of two thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd move.
This is second.
Second. Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving these additional appropriations, the amount of forty thousand dollars and two thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you very much for being patient.
Only second. Did you second that? I did, okay, I'm sorry. I can hear it, but I can't always tell where it came from.
Okay. Lisa. And then before you start, could you tell us a little bit about what you've just gotten online and?
Okay. On Thursday, we will be installing credit card machine in the clerk's office. It's completely free to the county. There was no cost. It's going to be wireless. So if the judge wants to see someone pay their court fees, we're going to be able to take the machine to them. There's going to be no cost as far as the use of the machine incurred to us is going to go back to patrons who choose to use it. I think we got it at three, three point two five percent or something like that. So the girls will start training on Thursday afternoon because we were closed and I wanted to be able to keep the office open to the public as much as we could so we didn't go with the day when we're open to the public.
And you have the training done here in-house?
Training is done in-house. Trying to keep as much training in-house as possible because it's going to cut down on overnight fees, mileage, meals.
Costs.
Expenditures, costs, just cost in general is going to cut the cost. Going to cut the cost.
So I wanted to commend you for that, for taking that initiative and doing that. I think that's much appreciated and that goes a long way to stretching the budget and making it work. So I appreciate that.
And I think it allows us to benefit more because the state is sending someone out here to train one-on-one. I'm not sitting in a room with fifty people or a hundred people and getting training, so.
I agree. We thank you. We commend you.
Thank you. Okay, so what I'm here for is I got a couple of things. The first thing, my superior court civil person has moved on to another job where she's going to be making more money. She's a full-time physician, and so I am asking that the council would allow me to hire, to replace Teresa Watson. And the person I'm looking at, her name is Amy Wise. She is a branch manager at US Bank, but she is losing her job due to the closing of their branch, and she said she's ready to move on after two years of, two closures in a year. So her monthly salary is going to be thirteen, twenty-six, seventy yearly. That's going to be seventeen, two, forty-seven for her. I think she would make a good asset to our office and I need her right now. I'm down to a skeleton crew in there.
She's replacing who?
She is replacing Teresa Watson.
Okay.
Actually, actually, my bookkeeper is going to move up to replace Teresa Watson. And then, so she's really going to replace my bookkeeper.
So what was the salary of the?
The sound, it's the same.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, everything's the same.
Okay.
And then I'm also asking, I also lost a part-time employee. Teresa Fall has decided to officially retire, which is hard for me because she knows a lot. So I am asking to hire in her place Lisa Becker. She would work twenty-eight hours or less a week, eight sixty-six an hour. And she worked with the Tennessee Department of Corrections. She has twenty-seven years of experience there and she's looking for something long-term, part-time.
She'll be a good fit.
So I, so I hear. I think she will make a, I think she'll make a very good fit in the office.
Is there a motion to approve the 144s?
I'd make a motion to approve Lisa's 144s.
Second.
Motion to approve, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Lisa's request for 144s, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
I will be coming back for another one, but I've just not come at peace with who I want to hire yet. So, and that one will be to replace me, so. As, yes, as the circuit court clerk, not me as your clerk. No, not losing me as your clerk. So that'll, that'll be in the future. The other thing I'm coming for, in the past, in the clerk's office, we have started with a hundred dollars total. We have eight women working in that office or a man, whichever comes, if we decide to add a man, that's fine too with me. But we start with a hundred dollars. So that leaves me running for change sometimes two and three times a day. So I spoke with the State Board of Accounts and I have asked about checking and getting an increase in the funds that we have in the office. I would like to get five hundred. That would put each of my frontline people starting with a hundred. I have nothing in the clerk's office. The bookkeeper's going to have nothing and the part-time person would have nothing. And they're telling me that this would come from the county general fund unappropriated. Would be money that, we're not spending it, we're just making change. So every day when we close out, there's going to be that five hundred dollars there, but it would alleviate me having to run to the bank two and three times a day to get change.
This was just where she was showing the, she started out with fifty dollars in each of two funds. So she wants to have five hundred dollars. So you would need to approve a four hundred dollar increase.
And if Gavin.
If you approve it, we'll write a check to her out of county general. And then they'll have to sign this type of form verifying that they've got five hundred.
Thank you for saving us money.
That money's not going anywhere. It's still staying here.
Yeah, because that's why she'll sign this, that that's in that fund and then.
Yeah, it's staying here. I'm not going to spend it.
I am saving the county money. I have let my husband do work that we would have had to pay for.
Is there a motion to approve or disapprove?
I'd move.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Should you make Lisa's request after five hundred?
Four hundred. Two grand, four hundred dollars.
Two grand, four hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, second? Motion on the floor to approve Lisa's request, giving her four hundred dollars for her cash drawer, breaking the colony. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it.
I'm hoping to see an increase in funds once we open the credit card up, so.
Lisa.
Yes.
Be expected for Jane's office to have to come up and get some of that to pay claims on certain days.
Hey, if the credit cards come in, we might be able to decrease it, so. Thank you.
David, if you don't mind, I'm going to try to get some of these quick things out of the way because it's going to take a little bit.
That would be fine.
Jeff, did you want to come on up? I don't see a sheriff on the.
He's got a nine forty-four.
A one forty-four.
A one forty-four.
I just came asking for your approval to, for a 144, to hire a replacement for a reassessment clerk. She retired, Penny Kendrick. She retired the end of December. And we finally have a good candidate I think will do well. And we finally have a good candidate I think will do well to replace her. And I just need your approval on the 144 for that.
I'll make a motion to approve Jeff's 144 for a new hire, a replacement.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the assessor's request for a 144. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. And then you're looking for money.
Yeah, if Lisa hasn't taken it all.
In all fairness, neither one of them were in office when the budgets were done.
Right.
So. Keep that in mind as you're looking at the request for, his request for $100. It would be, the purpose would be to, this money would be used to purchase material to build a small gate between desks to control the flow of foot traffic in the assessor's office. This gate would just be a small swinging gate. Also, this money would be used to add furniture feet to a wooden cart that will serve as a desk for a new public terminal inside the assessor's office. Could you get an unused stoplight from the city?
Yeah, I looked into that and they just didn't have one. Yeah, yeah.
And then the $500 would be used to purchase a letter folding machine. New deadlines from the state leave them less time to get mailings out. The assessor's office spends an estimated average of four weeks a year just to fold forms and letters. With 300 mobile forms, notices, two pages, 1,100 personal property forms, two to five pages, and at 7,646 Form 11 mailings with up to five pages, that's close to 30,000 pages on average to fold by hand. Does any of this fall under that contractual, were you, would the assessor's office using that service?
Yeah. They tried it once, it didn't, it did not save the county money, it cost more in the end, so.
Alright.
I believe the difference was about 50 bucks, but I think this, in essence, we spent four weeks of everyone in the office digging in and folding. Of course, I wasn't there. It was just my conversation with the ladies that are there. They never closed the office to do this. It's just, I think Kathy, she's not here to confirm, but I believe she spent a lot of time after work just folding pages to get the mailings out. I found a machine that will do that job rather quickly. It's adjustable. One of the things we have, and the reason I think this issue will take even longer to take care of the mailings, is the state gave us new Form 11s. And when you fold those, you cannot fold those evenly. So you need a machine to be able to do a, what is called a double parallel fold. And they have to be different lengths. And this machine will do that. It's less than $500. And it will speed the process up. Also, a benefit of this is because of the deadlines, if we can mail the Form 11s out, the sooner the better. The sooner we can get the appeal process done and over with, the sooner we can roll numbers and there'll be less of a, of an issue. The state has made a new rule, a new code, that states that if we do not mail the Form 11s out on time, I think last year they missed it by two days, so it's close. But it allows the appeal process to last a full year beyond the current assessment date. So you could see refunds piling up if, if we can't get through the appeal process quicker, just by getting the appeal forms out quicker. And it'll just be a good machine, it'll be, it's a good investment. It'll be a good investment.
So I would make a motion to approve the additional? Is that what that is, I mean?
You have any questions?
This is coming with that kind of maintenance agreement or any like that, or warranty?
Uh, it does come, it just has a limited warranty.
Limited warranty?
It is, it can more than handle the 30,000 forms. I don't think it'll be an issue. I think the last one the office had there lasted about 10 years. I mean, it just doesn't work now.
Okay, sorry about that.
So your motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Keala, second with that? Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the two additional appropriation requests, one in the amount of $500 for a letter folding machine, and a second for $100 for his little craft project. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Go away.
Thank you, appreciate it. Before I go, do you have any questions about what we're doing right now, or I don't want to take any more of your time, so I won't offer.
I'm sure you're just kinda sinking your teeth into things, kinda figuring things out, but one of the things we talked about is the appeals process. How are we moving forward on that?
Last Thursday during our training session, we established protocols for the appeal process. We've, we'll be using new forms that weren't used prior to this year. And it will speed the process up. There will be more rigorous details will be needed for any changes in the assessment values after reassessment data has been entered, so I think our appeal process will be smooth and, and quick. I don't. Gone are the days where appeals will last more than, be a lot of time. I'll be surprised if they last more than 30 days, but 'cause I, I think we have a good protocol and I'll be out in the field more, so I may be back and asking for travel money, but I think we can get it done.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Sheriff wasn't down there, but I know you've gotta be someplace, so if you would mind coming forward?
Well, this was something that was addressed at the Commissioners' meeting in December. And I had asked the auditor, auditor to put me on the agenda tonight, so I don't know if we had some miscommunication there, but.
Sorry.
No, it's all good, it's all good. As long as this, as long as this counts, I don't have to come back next month. But if I do, that's fine, just kidding. This is something that's been an issue for a while, something that came up in a budget hearing a few years ago. Our, my secretary, who's classified as First Deputy Clerical Beth King, is titled as a COMOT, which in layman's terms means she is considered a courthouse employee. She has not worked in the courthouse since 1991. She processes everything for the Sheriff's Department, handles everything at the Sheriff's Department. She is not eligible for the longevity pay that everybody else at the Sheriff's Department is eligible for. So she takes care of everybody else in the department, fills out every year the longevity that the deputies, jail officers, the other secretary that works there gets that longevity that she doesn't. And Beth, besides Amy Reisinger, is the second most tenured employee for the county. She has been with the county for 41 years, which I remind her all the time that she's been with the county longer than I've been alive. She loves that when I say that, too, not. But I just feel it's the right thing to do. The Commissioners thought so as well, and in December they voted three, all three of them voted for that. We then found out, and they weren't quite sure when they voted for it, that that was theirs to vote for or not. I assumed, and I think they did as well, that it was, was theirs. We made some phone calls after that and found out it was not. But they, they felt that it was the right thing to do as well. And what she would be switched over to is what the rest of the people that work at the Sheriff's Department are classified as, which is a P O L E, which is Police Operations Law Enforcement. So it would just be a change in classification. She would then be eligible for the longevity. Now that would not take place now. She is under the, she is of the understanding that that would be in the next, next budget cycle. That would not be for her entire time, because she did work at the courthouse initially. Then she went to the Sheriff's Department, then went back to the courthouse, and then when Sheriff Steele came in, he brought her back in 1991. So that would be from 1991 on. That longevity would, would tack on. And the longevity for that position would be 125 a year, as opposed to the deputies, which is 175 a year. But with your guys' approval, that was just a, that was done my first year in office. We got the jail officers raises and got them longevity, which was something that we were very proud to do. Something followed up from the previous year in Sheriff Watson's last year in office, that we got the deputies to raise longevity. Got everything done and then got a phone call from Mr. Winter that, hey, we got everything done, but we can't give Beth that raise because she's considered a COMOT. She's a courthouse employee. And it's something we've talked back and forth about, it's been brought up in budget hearings. And everybody's, yeah, that's, that's what we should do, we should take care of it, and it's kinda just been batted back and forth, never really been taken care of. And I just like to get it taken care of.
How many years did you say she had?
Total 41. But she, this would be, since she's been back at the Sheriff's Department since 1991. She came back under Harold Steele, brought her back. So the longevity would start back from 91. Yes.
You questioned me.
Sure.
I found out a little more after the fact as well. Your jail cooks? Are poles?
They are not. And that's something probably, they probably needs to be addressed as well. What, what are they classified as? Jane, the?
I thought the salary ordinance classified them as POLEs.
The jail cooks are?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's what I.
Okay. 'Cause they, they just came under our budget in the last two years. They were under the Commissioners, so we just inherited them the last two years, and they're not receiving it either, so.
I guess my concern would be, you know, somebody said, well, if you pay one pole longevity, you gotta pay them all. And I said, well, we're not.
Right.
Currently. And so what makes Beth qualify for longevity, 'cause she's still an executive secretary for the sheriff?
Right.
I would, I would think that you're gonna have, you're gonna have to include that for everybody. You cannot exclude the cook staff.
They've asked that question. And it's been brought up, yeah.
I mean, there's more to address.
Yeah, oh yeah. And I plan on addressing that a lot of the time.
I don't think, just because we changed her classification, it automatically throws in longevity and everything. I think that's a decision.
Well, that's a decision.
Above and beyond the job classification.
Right.
Because we do have poles, I believe, that are not being paid longevity.
Right, right, that's.
So I, I, I think there's two issues there.
Right, right.
Did you say Nancy was?
Nancy is, 'cause Nancy was hired as a jail officer. And that, the jail secretary has always filled that role. And the only person that, every person that's been hired as a jail secretary has been classified as a jail officer. And they've, they've usually been hired from within the jail. I can only think of one that was hired directly in there as a secretary, but always with the idea that if we need you to do a transport, or we need you in the jail, you may have to go over there. But everybody else has been hired and been brought over from the jail.
And you got another bucket list item. Do we have to, should we, if we classify them as poles, do we have to offer the same benefits? I would think you would have to.
I don't know.
What about if you change Beth as what Nancy is?
That's what we're talking about?
No, she's saying that jail officer instead of an executive secretary.
But they, the jail officers are classified as?
They can, poles, yeah.
Right, but.
You get the longevity.
She gets the longevity, that's what we're saying.
But are you actually saying that Nancy gets the longevity? Are you asking for another jail officer position?
No, we would change the classification of Beth. Nancy gets the longevity.
Yes.
Yeah, everybody else gets it as a jail officer.
Right.
Beth is not a jail officer.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. So we can, we can classify Beth as a jail officer if that makes you guys feel better.
Well, I'm just saying that, you know where I'm going with that.
Yeah.
Then under that theory, you guys should already be paying the kitchen staff the longevity. And should've been paying it already. And so you guys are digging that hole yourselves. I didn't, I didn't create that. You guys did that yourselves.
I know that, but we, but I think we're gonna come back and we'll hold that we have to do that.
Yeah.
So what we're gonna do is next year, budget it. I don't think we have to pay up this year. It's something we're gonna have to budget for next year.
I, I didn't open that door. But I, well, I mean, changing.
Changing Beth, yeah. That would, that would be retroactive to when we gave longevity to the jail officers four years ago then.
Or whenever they were named as poles.
Yeah.
I mean, the jail cooks. I mean, that's my concern.
Yeah.
If you've got poles over there, that's not getting longevity.
The cook staff hasn't been there that long. And what's, how long do they have to be there to receive longevity? What was it?
The longevity starts after a year.
After year one.
After year one, so.
How long have the jail cooks been there?
Sue's been there for probably at 10 years. Sue Wilson, our head cook. Now Judy would've been, Judy had been at 20, but she left over two, a year and a half ago, so.
But if you make Beth a jail officer, you don't have it for her.
She would still be classified as a pole no matter what. There's no change.
They're getting longevity.
I'm on one.
Jail officers get longevity, road deputies get longevity, yeah.
Right, but.
She's saying not.
I'm saying making her jail officer.
Cooks as jail officers.
Your cooks are not jail officers.
Everybody in the, everybody at the Sheriff's Department is classified as a pole. The cooks, the jail officers, and the road deputies, but Beth. Everybody's receiving longevity, Beth and the cooks. So, three people are classified as, are not receiving longevity. One person is not classified and not receiving it. So changing her, and she'd just be like the cooks and not receiving it. That's the only thing that would change. Does that make sense? Yeah, I mean.
I was looking at it differently.
I, I was aware of that. I mean, that, that, 'cause they brought up the longevity too, and I mean, I, you know, I know you guys, I know there would be a, from, from your guys' standpoint, that you would give every county employee longevity, and I'm not saying we deserve it over anybody else. I'm not here saying, I mean, if I wanted to really get into the jail officer's job over everybody else, I could, but I'm not going to say that. Everybody has tough jobs here. I'm not going to do that, but for Beth and what I, the job that Beth does, and Beth does not work over here, and Beth has been involved in everything that's happened over there, including being handcuffed to a toilet during the takeover. Beth deserves.
Oh, I agree with you. I think Beth got skipped.
Yeah, so.
So is there a motion on the floor to reclassify Beth King from a COMOT to a POLE?
I'll sort of move.
Second?
I will. Sorry, I'm really off tonight.
You just need to speak up a little bit.
Yeah, I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of changing Beth King's classification from a COMOT classification to a POLE classification, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
And we'll check on the other stuff with longevity, because we've got, it's a pleasure season, we get to take care of it anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. And she, she knows she's not receiving this now. I know that was a question, or we're gonna have to try to find this money. She's not worried. It's more about. What's that?
While you're here, Beth gave me a 144.
Okay, cool.
So for a new general officer to replace one who recently resigned.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. This is a good one, too, so before all the negativity with everybody. Dakota Huntsman accepted a position with the Cambridge City Police Department. So that is one of several of our jail officers that have moved on to accept police jobs elsewhere. We also have William Amerman that's working at City Police and has graduated the police academy, and have another that's taken a reserve position, is active in three different processes right now. So the 144 for the new jail officer that we have, I'm trying to, I'm thinking of who the new person that we have. Do you have a name? You don't?
Sorry.
I'm not sure. I don't have the name for you. But it is a replace Dakota Huntsman. I can get you a name if you need a name, but.
I'll make a motion that we approve Sheriff Jolie's 144 for a new jail officer replacement.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Motion to approve the 144 for the sheriff, and second it, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries.
I do have the name, too. I do have the name, too. Thomas Branstadter is our new jail officer. Thomas, and we just found out Thomas is a reserve, and he did, he is getting deployed, but it's just for eleven workdays. He will be back, it's just a project down south. So that's the one that's taking his spot. But Thomas had worked back at Community Corrections, nice young man, seems to be adapting very well, so he's been training for the last week and a half. I was trying to think of who took Dakota's spot. So he, and we just found that out last night, he's getting deployed, and that scared me when I first read that. And then it was for eleven workdays, I said, well, we can work around that, so. All right, that's all I got. I'm going to spark a game up here.
Jay?
Okay.
You've had to sit through your share of long meetings, so I apologize.
I'm kinda getting used to it, I think. I'm here for a one forty-four for a part-time truck driver. Trying to replace the one guy we've been having off so long. He'd been off since last November, and he's still under treatment, so. Kinda helps take the slack out of it, like I've got equipment, I've heard I can use it when snow comes. The money, the money's there, because the guy that's off's not getting paid, so.
Does the guy that's off, when they come back, and what would happen?
Well, we don't, he'll get laid off, but he's a part-time employee.
Okay.
But we don't know how long he's gonna be off. He's off for another three weeks before he goes for an MRI to see if he's able to come back or not. So.
We do have part-time.
We have part-time money, too, yeah.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve Jay's one forty-four.
Motion approved, we have a second by Kay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs, ahs, a motion carries. Jay, thank you for the work you've been doing, and your guys for the work on the county roads. Appreciate it. I know the weather changing back and forth isn't helping the puddle situation.
Yeah, we had mal patching them today, but I don't think we made much headway.
Thank you. David, you got two minutes.
David, David, you give your resignation, and we'll be to the end.
That's right, I saw that.
So we can look at you longer.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, before you start, thank you for, you know, your job. We appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure. I leave on good terms. It was just one of those offers I could not refuse. Not a mafia thing, but it was, it was a good, it was one of those things, so wasn't really looking, but there it was.
Can I ask you one quick question?
Yes, sir.
You did a good job.
No.
Conner'sville Fire Department, when their numbers are reported, if they go on one run and both, and all three stations are dispatched, is that three separate runs?
I don't think so. I don't think that's how it classifies them in the CAD. I don't believe, and I can clarify that with Jackie, but I don't think it, yeah, I think so, yeah. I know that was an issue back years ago, that was always sort of the scuttlebutt, that.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't think. So for the benefit of the people on TV, I'll read some of this stuff, because I know the report will be kinda out of context if I don't. They know, you guys know this, but people may not know that we're Fayette County nine one one, we're called a PSAP, we're the one and only public safety answering point for Fayette County, Indiana. And we, we dispatch for these agencies. Law enforcement, Conner'sville Police Department, Fayette County Sheriff's Department, fire, Conner'sville Fire, their three stations, and then Glendale Volunteer Fire, Everton Volunteer Fire, and Bentonville Volunteer Fire. As far as medical, we do Fayette County EMS, and then their transfer service. And we have started, again, doing some dispatching for animal control. They have two officers, and they come and go abusing radios, but when they asked, when they asked, when they asked to be dispatched, we were happy to do it. So we typically use their cell phones, but sometimes we use the radios. And then added this this year, we do also occasionally communicate over the radio and over the phones with state police. They'll call for, for things because they're regional dispatches, maybe they're not as fast as they want them to be. And then conservation, parole, and probation. Full-time employees, we have six, I would be counting myself, and then part-time, I've divided the part-time out a little bit for, it helps you to see it better. The part-time that actually work every week on every schedule are those seven. The four you see are PRNs, and that would be people that come in on occasion, and, you know, maybe once or twice a month, if that, and then, and sometimes more. And then the other two are still fully certified, but for various reasons, they're not active, and they, but they still wanna be on the rolls. I dropped a few that we just hadn't heard of from, for a while, just so we had better numbers. Because I know when you look, and if you were to see five or so more, it'd be, it'd be kinda puzzling to see why we have so many people. So we're down to a realistic number that are actively engaged somehow. Training. It was a great thing last year when state, the State Board, I N nine one one, when they started paying for our training, and our rec, and our certifications, and our recertifications, it was a real big deal. It's gonna, going forward, as long as they continue doing that, and they say that they're doing it, but they may not always do that, but at least going forward, it's gonna up our game as far as getting certifications. All dispatchers, full and part-time, receive these, this training. The in-house training, as I mentioned in the commissioners meeting, it will range from three months to a year. We'll have some that come on, and they just take to it like a fish to water. And we have one like that now, that you have to remind yourself, she's been here for four or five months. It's like she's been here for three years. It's, we're very lucky to get someone like that. We've got, we get those every once in a while. And so still, but then again, some that takes a year, that's fine, too. We just, we just work with them. Kelly has worked with them, and others have worked with them, and they, they either love it, or they eventually decide to go. Powerphone, Emergency Medical Dispatch, EMD, very important when you receive a nine one one call, that they have the questions to ask that are pertinent to a, to those emergencies. It gives you a screen that if it's a choking, or if it's a heart attack, they know exactly what questions to ask the person, or things to say to the person. What we have an opportunity to do right now, coming up this month, and Kelly will be taking this over, the company, Powerphone, is giving a deal to Indiana, because Indiana is very forward and active in nine one one stuff. They're giving a deal where we can get our, not only EMS, EMD stuff, screens with all the questions, we can get, we get police and fire, too. And that's gonna be like two hundred dollars per console. Very reasonable, we have it in the budget, and that, and we'll get them all certified, certifications prayed for. So now, you will now have Powerphone certs for police, fire, EMS, which is a big step up. It really is. That'll be good. So NCIC IDEX, we know about that, that's their certification for running warrants, plates, licenses. AFCO Telecommunator Cater One, they get that, and they, that is like a college course, we're trying to get all of them through that. It's required for full-time, and we're starting to get some of the part-time people through that. It takes a month. It's a paced college course, so you can't really take it quickly. You can't really, you can't cheat, you can't, it is difficult, and it requires writing, it requires interaction, it's, they earn that one. CPR, regular CPR, it helps, helps them with their EMD. Quarterly in-house training is if we have something that needs to be addressed. NIMS, that's, that's the FEMA system, that's National, National Incident Management System. That's how all command, all incident, incidents should be conducted. And then other specialty training as it comes up. Equipment and systems, we have a system that was installed in 2011. We do have a quote and have a plan to get that replaced by, in 2020. And I put in for a grant for, it's a local grant, for headsets for the, the radios. They'd work with the ones they have now, but they would also work with the new ones, of course.
What about 2020?
Radios.
Okay.
Yeah, and.
That's not the CAD?
Not the CAD, no. It's the, it's the radios, the actual radios in the basement, that integrate into our console with computers. And the, there is a, one, one thing we've talked about is a municipal lease, and it's, it's a real good way to stay in good equipment and keep your stabilizer budget. And I found out that Mobile Comm can set us up with that.
What about CAD?
The CAD, now the CAD, you know, it is.
How far away from me need, need that to be updated?
Well, they just had an update, they just had an update last year.
Talking about the technology.
Well, you know, the thing with that is that it's, it's not just nine one one engaged in that, that, the stakeholders in that are police, the Sheriff's Department, the prosecutor, the fire department, EMS, all, everybody, any, every emergency services person, group has, uses Spillman. And so anything that has to do with that, they are, they're, they're one of the decision-makers on that.
I guess, and it's from the console.
Oh, on the, on the, this, this is, this quote that we have for new radios, and the, not so much, we're not talking about the console furniture, we're talking about the actual console integrated for the, each dispatch, that's part of the quote we have for, for 2020.
So we talked about moving them up to the hill. Is that the time you would do that, in 2020?
Well, I think if, if they're gonna move, that's, that's the time to move it.
You can get that set up while this is still functioning.
One, there are some costs, too, that we should have Mobile Comm look at. One I learned about is grounding of the entire site. And that's just to keep it protected from lighting and stuff like that. And it may not be as a big, big a deal as I think it is, but it's definitely something you don't want to overlook. And then secondly, soundproofing. The way that, that particular building's set up now, you'd have to do a little bit of upgrading on soundproofing. But, yeah, it wouldn't be a bad idea if you're doing a move, because the, you know, you don't wanna, there's a service that will come in and actually run dispatch for you in like a mobile dispatch unit, very expensive, so that you can actually uproot your equipment and move it. But at the end of the day, it's as expensive as almost buying new equipment. So leave the old equipment that's about ready to be phased out anyway, leave it in place, move it, do, move it up on the hill, have the, the new stuff installed.
Or wherever.
Or wherever, yeah.
That's what I was going with, is that while they're setting this up, we make use of the old stuff.
Yeah.
Once that is set up, then we cut the service and potentially leave it as a backup.
That's what I was gonna say. It's beneficial to everyone to leave it as a backup.
It's beneficial to have a backup.
Absolutely. You've got a generator, you're gonna, it's time for a new generator, too. Because, you know, it's, it is.
As a front light.
As a front light generator, that generator, we could, you could still, it's a great backup generator, that would be for a backup piece. And, you know, that, for our ISO rating, and I hate to, I kinda went off on a tangent here, but you did it.
It's my fault.
For your ISO rating.
You feel that bad, you're off again.
It's a, you get a point for having a backup piece out, so that's a good thing. You get, you get a point for that. Where was I? So the, the, the big thing of 2018 to report for our radios was, like Gary mentioned, the antenna project, found out there was some defective workmanship, defective materials, defective materials, and we, we approached them, and they honorably fixed everything, and it is fantastic. New antennas, new cable, and every, connections are great. So that's, that was a big, a big deal in 2018. Then the vendor I have been using is Mobile Comm out of Cincinnati, it's a Motorola dealer. They do, they do Franklin County, and so it's, it's logical for them to come to Fayette. So they're, they're good, good folks. Our nine one one system, as you know, is in digital IP-based system. Our backup phones, we call them the zombie apocalypse phones, they're the Mevo phones, and they are, the phone, there is a little phone that sits there for each dispatcher that is when, when everything goes black, those phones work, allegedly. No, no, they do. They, they do. And, and they're, it's one of those things that they've, they've thought of, and it's using a different, using a different path. You know what I mean? They use a different path as opposed to the traditional phone, or the nine one one phones. Our phone vendor's Frontier Wireless, or Frontier, and they, they integrate with the digital to make all this work. And then our recorder is Equiture, and that's where we can playback, the dispatchers can playback recordings up to seven hours, so if they hear, they hear an officer say something they can't quite understand what he said, they can play it back real quick. And then also, we, we have permanently archived, not only on the, on the server, but also in the cloud, we have permanently archived recordings of every radio transmission and every phone.
Are you sure it's in the cloud?
It's in, yeah.
It's in A Cloud.
In A Cloud.
Just kidding.
No, no, it, it's with the Mevo phone in that same cloud. Yep. Computers, this is what he was mentioning, the console, this makes up part of the console. Each, each of the two dispatch stations have four, each one of them has four computers, five monitors. We are working on a third station, there is I N C I C IDEX in my office, and we don't really use it there. And we need it in the dispatch center for running, for various reasons. I won't go on and on about it, but there are regulations about that, you have to have it facing away from a door. So we're gonna try to reconfigure the room so it can be used. It becomes a call taker center, becomes a training station, it becomes a lot of things. And, and someday, whether there or somewhere else, it's a good idea to have a third station with radio capabilities, so that if you have the, like we had that big ice storm in October, and, and we received so many calls, we could have used ten dispatchers that day. So having an extra one's a good idea. Then we have two laptops and one desktop in our offices, in the nine one one office. The messaging system that you're aware, you're all aware of is the Everbridge system. We sent over a thousand messages in 2018. It's a, it, the bugs are worked out of it, it works great. There are some changes coming in the future that I'm aware of, where they're talking about integrating messaging into the CAD, so that the dispatcher doesn't have to type the same redundant information into another program in order to send it, which is, slows it down. It is, this, you could just capture certain boxes in the CAD, and it sends it to them automatically. That, that's, that's something that's coming, probably, I don't know, I think it's available now somewhere, some places, but to us, I think it's gonna be more reliable, probably in two years, where it'll work. Mapping, we use the same one the county uses, WTH, that's GIS mapping. Our generator, the one I mentioned was a little old, it's reliable, it's an old Dodge Slant Six engine, but it, and it keeps on running, installed in ninety-three. Our UPS, installed in ninety-three also, although it has fresh batteries. That is there so that in the, in the instant when power drops, before the generator kicks on, that maintains power, so that you don't have all your nine one one computers booting down or turning off, which is what you want. That's what that's there for. All right. Anyone, any questions about equipment? And we're, we're about done. The call volume, this is 2018 compared to twenty-nine, twenty-seventeen. What I'm speaking about here are nine one one calls only, initially. Wire line, those are traditional phones. We had fourteen-hundred-and-twenty-nine one one calls from wired phones, whereas in twenty-seventeen we had thirteen-eighty-nine. Wireless cell phones, we had about the same as twenty-seventeen, nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-eight wireless cellphone, or nine one one calls to ninety-three-nineteen in twenty-seventeen. Voiceover internet protocol, those are like Vonage, that kind of phone. They're, they're nine, you can call nine one one on a, having those internet phones. Five-hundred-and-fourteen over last year's five-twenty-seven. One that really went up is a non-service initialized phone. Those are cell phones that do not have contracts on them, they're just a phone, that, that, as long as you have a charge on it, you can call, you can call nine one one from it. So I always tell people, since I've learned about this, to, if you have an old flip phone, plug it in, put it in your barn. plug it in, put it in your barn, and so if you need to call 911, you gotta phone, that'll work. It's a good idea. Then, total 911 calls in 2018, 11,182, just down from 2017, which is 11,642. Our admin calls, those are calls coming into the building for all sorts of things, for, I need to talk to a detective, I need to talk, I need to ask about school, if schools close, that kind of thing. Those are 73,121, and also just for police service, anything non-emergency, 73,121, for a total of all calls, 84,303 in 2018. Text to 911, that's something that's, Indiana leads the country on. Almost every, every county has text to 911. We had more this year than last year. They didn't have the data up for comparison. Last year, they didn't have it reportable, so, but this year, we had text to 911, that's someone calling, texting for help, 42 texts, and then you see responses from dispatch 85, that's a good balance, that means the tech, that means the dispatchers are giving them aid, asking them questions and getting the people to them. As you know, text to 911 is what you use if you cannot use your voice for safety reasons, or if you're deaf, or if, for all manner of reasons, and also, I mentioned in the other meeting, and I think it's good to get this message out, if you're somewhere where there is a really poor cell signal, sometimes, not always, no guarantees, because every phone's different, every cell provider's different, every, there's variables, however, if you, if you have a very poor signal and you just can't get out, a text message tends to be able to get out. So that's good to know that you can reach 911 via text, sometimes when you can't reach them any other way. Alright, calls for service for various emergency services groups, agencies, in 2018 versus 2017, CPD, Conner'sville Police Department, 13,581, which is up from 2017, 12,816 in '17. Fayette County Sheriff had 4,167 calls, as, down slightly from 2017, 4,819. Fayette County EMS, 4,475, down a little bit from 2017, which was 4,738. Conner'sville Fire Department, 1,480, down a little bit from '17, which was 1,523. Glendale Fire Department, 188, up from 2017, which was 180. Everton Fire, 442, in 2017, 485. Bentonville Fire, 154, over '17's, 183. So a total, total incident count for 2018 was 17,686 for Fayette County, and then 2017, it was 19,124.
St. Bentonville sleeping on the job.
That guy retired up there, so I don't do much.
We include in the report 911 surcharges, it tells how part of 911 is paid for, part of it is paid for by the $1 collection for phones, it's, it's a tack on there. They're talking about bringing, bringing, bringing it to the House floor in Indiana in 2020 to raise it to a dollar and a quarter, which we desperately need, as you know. The budget, these, the, the, the last thing on the, on the report, shows our ending, beginning and ending balances for both funds from 20, from January 1st, 2018, to December 31st, 2018. So, I'm sure you already have those numbers, anyway. But that's that, and I do appreciate working with every one of you, it's been good.
Happy for you, glad to see you go, just as a whole, not personal.
I want to say a minute, I will comment, too. He came into there, and he took hold of that place, and he became a team member immediately, even though sometimes he doubts that. Okay? He has given me a wealth of knowledge that I didn't have before he came. So, it's been great, I will miss him, too. He has absolutely been number one in that office. So I, I enjoyed working with him, we, we buffer off of each other, I'm gonna miss him. He's done great.
And she's, she's a 20-year vet, and she is, if I couldn't have done it without her, let me tell you.
I've learned things from him, too, though, so.
Yeah.
I'll never completely train. I, every day's new, so I appreciate him, too.
Poop hug.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, David.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it, thank you. We've probably got nobody left anymore. We've blown them all out. I thought I told you to be a little meeting, but tried to, but something in the water today. Oh, no, Gary.
But I forgot. Today, we went over the feasibility studies, proposals for the Dollar Store and, and our correctional facilities and our needs. The commissioners did not actually hire a firm yet, but we did pick one out of the three firms that submitted proposals. My, my thoughts, and I shared it with the rest of the commissioners, and they fully agreed that we would narrow it down to one group, ask them to sit down with the council and the commissioners as a joint session, for a question and answer session, as far as trying to pinpoint a more precise feasibility study for our needs. It was a pretty, all three of them were pretty blanket proposals. We felt that there was a need to spend more time with that particular firm as a joint board, and, and just kind of pick their brain, as well as they'd pick ours, of what we wanted to do, and where we wanted to go, and so on and so forth, and that, that company has helped me, Mike, RQ, AW.
AW.
Architectural firm. They're very well-known in the DOC world for developing, or, or developing DOC facilities, both local and, and I believe state, state and federal, this region at least. So, I'm looking forward to that. There'll be a request for a joint meeting here soon, I hope, for that purpose only, that we can sit down with that firm, because I want that really specific to our needs, that feasibility study. I don't, I don't want to spend thousands of dollars on just a blanket study, community study. I want us to look at all the possibilities, I want, if we're gonna be spending money on correctional facilities, I want to make sure that we spend it, our taxpayers' money wisely, and to give us the most benefit, so.
Do it right.
Let's do it right, once, let's do it once.
Not to say it wasn't before, I'm not going down that path, I'm not saying that.
No, no, but we tried to do that with, we spent a long time on the courthouse project, just trying to look at different options and different studies and different directions, just to make sure this was the right thing to do. And I think it was. I think this meets our space needs for several years, several decades to come, and I think that's the important part. We've got to address, if we're gonna address our correctional facilities needs, we need to address it for long-term, 50 years if all possible. So, I just wanted to bring that forward to you.
Thank you, I'm glad you did.
I, I can't believe you let me forget that.
Oh, it's going so long, so. But as Gary has said numerous times, it's not a committee of three, it's gonna be a committee of 10, so, and we're gonna be a part of that process, too, and I think that's important, because we're gonna have to procure the money for that to make it happen, whatever, whatever we've decided to do, that's gonna be best fit the needs of the county, the taxpayers. So, thank you for bringing that up. If there's no patrons' concerns, I'm going to have a motion to a journalist, somebody wants to keep his baby going.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, all those in favor, please, please, say aye.
Aye.
Because you, you almost went as long as you did.
Yes. This is good.